Okay, the time is a minute after seven. I'd like to welcome you to the regular meeting of the Geneva Board of Education 304. Could we have the role, Bonnie? Here?
Here.
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 I will lead us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. A reminder to assign the attendance sheet for all of you. Next item is the approval of minutes for the regular session June 10 and executive session June 10. Bonnie, did you receive any corrections? Does anyone have any corrections at this time? Could we have a motion to approve both of them, please?
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. The next item is the preliminary education fund budget. Assistant Superintendent Lathan will present it to the board with a preliminary head fund budget for 2425. Andy, do you have anything to add to that?
No, just, I know Todd's been working very hard on this and he just presented it to the finance committee as well. So eager for the presentation.
Thank you. It feels like it's been so long since I had a chance to share this with the board. Minutes. All right, so good evening. This is the preliminary education fund budget. This is from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. And this was added earlier to the finance committee. So they had a chance to look at it. This compiles all the other preliminary budgets. That'd be technology, transportation, operations and maintenance, and then finally education. So it puts the main pieces together. Okay, so the assumptions that were developed to craft the education fund budget. Looking at revenues of $78,974,812. The assumptions are that we'll see a 3% increase in a stable economy. That our evidence-based funding will be maintained at $4321,713. We split that between two funds. The education fund to support educational purposes and the operations and maintenance fund to support the learning environment. Anticipate new construction to come in at about $15 million. That's about the average of what we've seen. And then a good investment income that we've had. We've had a good market that we've invested in. Matter of fact, it's been very good for us and we hope that continues in the long range based upon some of the decisions that we've made. And then also our fund balances that we need to transfer in support of the capital plan. Expenditures for the education fund estimated at $88,447,912. Salaries are based upon our working agreements and full staffing. Benefits based upon healthcare, increased costs and our pension costs. Our purchase services are our support agreements that we use to operate off of. Our supplies and our materials are looking at a 3.4% increase of inflation. And so those were added in. Our capital, our capital equipment costs that we have within the education fund. And then our other expenses are things such as dues, fees, contingencies and our tuition. So Mid Valley, Fox Valley Career Center, those types of external groups that we pay tuition to for our students. And then lastly, our non-capital, which are typically replacement and new equipment below the $3,000 capital threshold. So I compiled a five-year summary for the board, looking at actuals from 2021, 2122, 2223. And then looking at the 2324 in-progress revenue, looking at about $82,304,446. And then looking at next year's draft, estimating $78,974,812. Question would be, why is that lower? I mentioned to the finance committee that we had received more taxes in May and June than we would anticipated. And therefore that went into the fund balance. And therefore it would be less taxes that we would anticipate receiving in the 2425 budget. So that was adjusted. Looking at the five-year response for some of our expenses. Salaries, benefits, purchase services, our supplies, materials, our capital, other, our non-capital and our totals. Same thing, I have our actuals out there for us. Looking at 2324 for our in-progress. And I mentioned earlier that our auditors always have the ability through modified accrual to pull anything within 60 days. So that would be July and August back into the current year if they wanted to record a revenue or expenditure at their purview. But we're looking at the in-progress ending June 30th of this year at $79,652,646. Next year, we're anticipating an expenditure need to operate at $88,447,912 for the education fund. Some notable changes. I mentioned the larger tax receipts, so that kind of messes up some of the revenue planning. Actually, it looks like it's reduced and really it's not. It's already there, but it just becomes fund balance and it's in our possession. Some decreased federal dollars. So I mentioned earlier that ESTER completes in September, so we'd be making our last claim for that. And we used up all the dollars that we had out of that original 3.2 million. A slight decrease in our investment returns. We've seen the rate of return decline from that 5% that I mentioned earlier in the other presentation to now. And then we're a tier four school district, so we don't anticipate any new dollars in evidence-based funding, which means we're solely really supportive of our local tax revenue. Whether it be taxation through EBITDA or through our fees or other means. Salary increases are a response to wage inflation, but also our agreements. We've seen a second year of large increases to all types of our insurance, health especially. But this year, we've seen increases in our property casualty and our workers' comp. So those went up as well. So those are areas that we have to review to see how we can reduce some of our exposure. And that comes under the risk management in my office. And then also looking to how we continually support our capital projects and the plan by the facility task force. And then lastly, changes in the economy or inflation or that might affect our cost to do business. Okay, and then that completes the preliminary education fund budget. Any questions from the board? Yes, Dr.?
So, just asking. Fortunately, I'm getting a little bit of handle with this, even though we've done it many times. My question is, you categorize something saying budget to support the learning environment. Is that a categorical thing or is it just kind of a nebulous?
So when I say, I'm really more talking about our capital projects. We're looking at roofs and structures and those types of things that we place in there, our boilers. So that it's a safe environment. It's a learning environment that's conducive to learning, not too hot, not too cold. It's comfortable. So we look at all those things that we invest into that comes out of that Fund 60, our capital fund. So that's approved for the district and those are really improvements to infrastructure.
Yeah, just trying to get a better understanding. So these are environmental things that you're talking about for the most part?
I say they're mostly tangible bricks and mortar.
Okay, not technology?
We do have technology. Those typically aren't in Fund 60, but they come out of Fund 10 for learning purposes and Fund 20 for infrastructure, like switches and servers and those kinds of things. So they come out of two different funds for technology.
So just not to be a geek here, but I just want to know, is that a document that can be reviewed to, I mean, just for information purposes of what those categories mean in terms of support and learning environment? Is that a document or what is that to say what those things are?
Well, the learning environment typically comes out of what we would consider operations and maintenance. But when they become a larger project, they come out of Fund 60, which is our capital projects. So when we talk about the learning environment, we talk about everything other than the basic education or typical education of children through their learning or scholastic needs. So we talk about sidewalks, we talk about gym floors. That's more or less the learning environment versus the educational side. So when you look at the budget and you see like two types of tuition. There's a per capita and there's also the facility. And this is more in line with the facility.
I guess I would have to maybe see it in writing. I guess I don't understand it right now, but go ahead, carry on.
Okay.
Oh, you're not, I was just, was going to thank you for your explanation of the balance in the educational fund from year to year because of that unusual thing. And as far as Will's question is concerned, I think sometimes euphemisms can get us in trouble.
Okay. Yeah, I'd also say another document that you could look at would be the board's capital improvement plan. That's a good resource too to figure out when I say the learning environment, what we put into it. But we took a look at more things that are bricks and mortar than software or learning or textbooks. Yeah, okay.
Oh, I just had a question about the larger tax receipts coming in in June. Is that a trend that we've seen? Because I feel like we've talked about that before. So has that been happening the past couple of years?
So at a typical year, we might see, I'd say, 49.5% received in May, June and one fiscal year, 49.5% or 49.51. There's always a portion of the taxes that we don't receive that go into like a tax sale or default. So this is a new trend. I think it kind of happened, started to see that change a little bit last year at the end of COVID where I believe more taxes are being escrowed and therefore they're paying both installments at one time. Unfortunately, they're, well, unfortunately, they're paying them in June, which hits one fiscal year. But that also means that I have to reduce the revenue in the next fiscal year because those payments have been paid, received, and they're essentially in our bank as cash.
So will it just stay that way where then if this trend continues year to year, we'll just have to pull from the the fund budget and, or will it even out eventually?
So I think we see this as an ongoing trend that I have to change the way that I budget and levy. And I would anticipate getting more receipts at the end of a fiscal year than at the beginning that we would typically spend down. It will change the fund balance. So for example, instead of me using a levy method where I would levy for half that comes in one fiscal year and half that comes in another, but you pay them both installments in a calendar year, I would have to change that percentage and estimate differently when those taxes would be received.
Thanks, that helps me better understand.
So Todd, for maybe for the folks at home who might be watching this and trying to understand that a little bit. Is it, is it an easy way to understand this? You know, like to compare it to your house? So I got, we kind of got paid ahead a little bit, right? So we got money that theoretically we're supposed to spend in this coming year, but we got it in last fiscal year. So now we have it, we put it in, quote, put it in the bank, right? Which would be our fund balance. But then when we create our budget and we put our revenue, it looks like that money isn't coming in as revenue because it actually already did in the previous year. So that money's there, it's in the bank, quote. But it's not, it doesn't look like it's new revenue on the budget for this coming year because it's not actually coming in in that coming year, so we can't build it into the budget.
Right, so we're not getting more taxes or less taxes. We're getting the same amount, just the timing of when those are received.
Right, and it's the timing of when that's received in relation to when we have to make the budget.
You gave the analogy of getting a paycheck and getting paid early or more and then you put it in the bank. You still have it there, it's just in the bank.
I think it would be easier if we just made the installments July and October versus June and September, right?
That would not be my option.
Same fiscal year.
And as long as we're doing little parallels, it's closer to a farm where you get your money in the fall and you have to spend it in the spring.
Which is traditionally what we do, right? We get that, I call that Jason, July, August, September, October, November. That's when Jason gets paid. And then we spend that down as we get toward the end of the year. And our lean years, our months are typically our March, April, when we spent our taxes down. Our fund balances get lower, you can see that through your treasury report. And then they start coming back and we build up that bank account again. Okay, other questions from the board? Okay, I will move on to the next presentation. Okay. So this is our draft budget. So this is where I've compiled all the smaller budgets into an idea of what our financials might look like for fiscal year 2425. And this is what it'll look like. Same assumptions, they don't change. They're still the same assumptions that we had regardless of what fund it was because they're all basically applied the same way or affect them the same way. Okay, so the education fund. Really looking at the column that says 2425 budget, the fourth one in, bottom line revenues compared to the bottom right corner, which are our expenditures. So for the education fund, $78,974,812 in anticipated revenue applied against $88,447,912 of expenditures. Using fund balance, we're going to be using that to fund Fund 60, the capital. We've done that traditionally by making those processes. We do a resolution of fund balance transfer to fund those initiatives. Operations and maintenance fund, $15,603,232 compared to the bottom right number of our budgeted expenditures of $17,031,117. Again, utilizing our fund balance. Again, taxes create this issue a lot and also some planning that we've done. Our debt service, this is how we pay our bond and interest payments for our bonds that we have in previous capital and construction projects. Revenue of $14,952,111. And then we'll be making our bond and interest payments, $14,877,226. Transportation fund, we would anticipate a revenue of $4,916,282. And then we would look at expending $6,152,070. So keep in mind, we changed our transportation plan about when we buy buses because we had some issues not getting those buses. So the expenditures look a little higher because we're using fund balance for those because we've already set aside those dollars. Retirement fund, this is a fund that I mentioned to the finance committee I need to look at again because our revenues are quite higher. $3,519,000 compared to $2,871,352. I need to work on that a little bit and check those numbers. They should be, in my opinion, a little closer together. And I will be looking at this fund a little more in detail. So this is where we'd have our FICA Medicare and we'd also have our IRF pension payments. So I'll need to look at that and see if something there needs to be a little closer together based upon our total employees that we have in our FTE. Capital projects fund, $11,740,000 is what we would typically be looking at for the revenue. We'd add that to the fund balance to put that against the expenditures of $15,385,000 to cover our capital projects. Working cash, remember this is our investment fund, so there are no expenses, but $195,000 of local funds, which is actually investment income. Same thing with TORT, $400 there, there are no expenses. And then the last fund is the life, health, safety fund. So we've already received taxes for that and we're finishing those projects this year. So we have $21,000 in interest income. We'll be utilizing the fund balance and we'll be using that against expenditures of $711,300 to finish those remaining 10-year life, health, safety projects. So looking at all funds for our fiscal year 25 budget, $118,221,837. And we're looking at expenditures of $145,475,977. Quite a difference there. I'd mentioned earlier that this is between this process and the tentative budget. I tend to pull these numbers a little closer together. I run them a little differently. I look at the end of year. I have a chance to look at what we're already spending in July and August for employees and our final employment. And then these will be a little closer together. We'll also have some fund transfers that'll have to be reviewed. And if there are adjustments that need to be made, they'll be made between the revenue and expenses. All right, so I took the summary of all the funds, looking at the far right column for 2425, looking at what we estimate the opening fund balance at $89,396,961. Higher than I anticipated. Again, that goes back to those taxes that are received. You know, I can't do anything about that. It's just kind of the way that the money fell. When I went back and took a look, we're looking at almost $3.8 million of money that we received really in advance. We had about an extra $2 million of investment income. We had a couple of categories like private placement where we had more outplacement and some of the timing, but we had some more revenue that came in from that. So looking at revenue of $129,921,837. Our expenses at $142,975,977, leaving the net fund balance of $76,342,821. Some things I noted about some changes in our expenditures that were a little lower than we had anticipated. Some of those to the fact we didn't complete our capital projects. So that, that doesn't apply toward our expenses that we would anticipate. We had some of our capital equipment that we didn't purchase this year. Our supplies and some of our utilities were down. So when I went back and looked at gas, we had probably a pretty moderate winter. We had a couple of cold days, but overall it wasn't bad. And I looked at our electric and that was down as well. So those were expenses that we'd anticipated having higher, but came in lower. And that's just kind of how it played out with our budget that carried over into the next year. So areas of concern, anything that has to do with the economy and any external factors are beyond our control. Inflation, if it goes up, that affects the district, costs us more to do business. Any reduced income that we might have, like I said, it's been very good, but that could change. And then our staffing issues, if we end up with less staff, that also means less expenditures. So that's less salary and less benefits. If we have any issues with the competitive, competitive bid process, that's happened in past years. A lot of that's affected by the economy and wages as well. And then any project delays that we might have that we've seen kind of the previous year in our capital projects that would affect our budget. Okay, questions on the draft budget for the district for 2425?
I had one question. So where in the budget are student registration fees factored in? Like where's that money?
So those are local as well.
Oh, that's considered local? So that's taxes and registration?
Yeah, so they'll hit a couple of funds. So in Fund 10 is where you'd see like your regular registration fees.
Okay.
In O and M, you'll see your parking fees. So those that have parking passes, that comes into that fund as revenue. And then any student riders that we have that live beyond a mile and a half that are not eligible for free bus transportation. They pay that rider fee that goes into Fund 40. So it's just not, investment income is a lot of those others. So when you look at Fund 10, that's your athletic fees, that's your gate fees that go to events. Those are all within that local area.
And do they get broken down then by like, here's just plane registration, here's athletic fees, here's? Or is it just lumped together?
No, they'll be, they're broken apart. And probably the best place to look is in the treasury report under revenue. They're not going to have everything, but they'll still have food service. They'll have those types of things in there so you can see what those local revenues are. There's probably some more like embedded in there. I mean, it's just a summary of all the fees, but they're ironed there.
Okay, but it's mainly folk, it's in that local, that local revenue?
Right, so when I do the treasury report, I take all the local and then I subtract out the taxes and break those two out. But I would go to the revenue fund to see more of a breakdown of where the revenues are at.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, any other questions? Okay, so just, lastly, I'll come back next month with a tentative and September with the final for the board's approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Public comments are next, Bonnie. Have you received any requests for public comments? I say with a straight face. Would you like to say anything? All right, we'll go on to the next item, legislative updates. Jackie?
I just have one thing I wanted to talk about today. If you read in the paper, the governor did sign the bill that creates the Illinois Department of Early Childhood. That will be a combination basically of services that are now held within three different departments. The Illinois State Board of Education, the Illinois Department of Human Services and the Illinois Department of Children and Family Services. So it's now kind of a one-stop shop for early childhood. It will be fully implemented July 1st, 2026, or at least that's their goal. So a few years out yet. I don't know how that will affect us as a district in the future, but we will just kind of keep our eye on this. I checked and the website is live. You can go and read the press release about it and more information about what they're trying to do. So I think that's an important update for all of you that that's out there now. And I didn't see any other legislation that has been signed by the governor at this time. And that's my report.
Thank you very much, Jackie. Next, superintendent's report.
Thanks, can you turn me on there, Todd? Oh, perfect. Thanks, sir. Just a few things to highlight today. So first, we're just starting to, just a little more foreshadowing as I like to do with our meetings. You know, we've been talking a lot about a new mission and vision as part of our strategic plan. And as we're looking ahead to our theme this year, we know that our mission, even though it's very hard and this job is very difficult, our mission is possible. So we're going to be doing some more things around the very difficult but very possible mission that we have to accomplish over the course of the next year. And we'll be sharing some more information with the community about how this mission is possible and all the great things that we're going to be doing. So that's just a little bit of fun and foreshadowing for the year ahead. Also, you know, as we're in the summer here, obviously a lot of work is happening and don't need to get too far in the weeds, but there's a lot going on. Obviously, a lot of hiring, Adam and his staff are just onboarding people all the time. I think we're in pretty good shape right now as we look ahead to the start of the year. There's a lot of curriculum collaboration and planning going on with our teachers, groups of teachers working on different things. Obviously, we have new resources, there's teachers taking on new classes and programs. They're working through that. We've got some social emotional learning programming and opportunities that our guidance team is working on developing. We've got some folks developing resources and curriculum supports for our English language learners. So lots going on in the area of curriculum and development over the summer as our teachers are coming in and working on some of that. We're also taking a look and digging into, you know, data, doing some analysis and review of that. And specifically, we're talking about some of our assessment data. And that really kind of ties right into the next section where we're thinking about, you know, doing some assessment planning and potential transitions. As we're looking at data, we're looking at, you know, how kids have done on the assessments that we've given. Is that giving us valuable information? Is it the right information? We're also starting to get a peek, a preliminary look at some of the state assessment data. It's still early, but that's looking promising. And when that comes out in the fall, I think we'll have some, we're hopeful we'll have some celebrations about some of the state assessment data that's coming out there. And then when we're looking at planning, you know, I know there's some committees getting together in the coming weeks to look at elementary assessments and how all that is working and what are the right things based on some of the curriculum changes that we've been working through. And also, as I think we've talked about before, at the high school level. Remember, the state has transitioned us from the SAT for the high school accountability assessment to the ACT. And so there's a lot of work that has to go into that transition as well. Lot of construction going on. I'm sure Larry and Paul might share about the facilities task force today. Lots happening. This photo right here is one of the new boilers being lowered into the high school last Friday. The old boilers were about the size of a school bus. So just when you look at how different and efficient the new equipment is, lots of work is happening. Also getting ready for school year startup, right? We've still got new kids coming to enroll here in the building and at the schools, finishing up registration for folks from last year, really digging into those schedules and making sure everybody's going to have a schedule to start the year. And then obviously, we're working on our communication planning as the strategic plan rolls out. And, you know, the importance of having continued community engagement, started the year strong with that. I think last year from my role, having an opportunity to go communicate with the public and I need to do some of that. So the communications task force is meeting here pretty soon and we're going to talk about some of those communication plans as well. We're also nearing the end finally with the demographic study. So we were finally able to get the birth data that I know we've been waiting on for a long time. And this is really important. The, the structure of this demographic study and the way that this model helps us figure out, you know, or judge or predict what our enrollment will be, it's based on actual live births. So what you're looking at is we provided all the ZIP codes that could possibly touch Geneva School District. And we provided that to our demographer who then worked with the state. And these are, this is every live birth and every one of those ZIP codes for the last 10 years. So then we've been working with them to make sure we're identifying every one of those live births for the last 10 years that is within the blue area. You see, that's Geneva School District's boundaries, right? Bonnie actually was working with Dr. Kofron for a long time today, making sure that we had all the exact right, you know, folks identified within our boundaries. Because the idea of this model is that once you know who has been in a given geographical area and then their attendance within that school district's boundaries over time, that is really your best predictor. best predictor of how many kids you're going to have in that attendance area in the future, right? So if we know, for example, that in, say, the Mill Creek Elementary School area, you have this many live births in this year, and that translates into this many students in school when those, when that cohort is in fifth grade or sixth grade, you can then make a reasonably good prediction, okay, with these kids who were just born, what is that same number going to look like? That's, that's the whole philosophy behind this. And so having this data is really valuable. We're glad that we're finally at these final stages and should have some good data to start using for the next big thing we want to talk about is, which is our strategic plan, right? So a couple of key things here that we've been working on over the summer. Obviously, it's a little harder over the summer, but we're starting to pull some teams together. I think I shared this last time, to focus on some of our actionable goals. And at this point, this is really our administrative team and members of our leadership council. Once we get into the year and start parsing out some of these goals, we'll probably have some, some additional teams that will be looking at some, you know, drilling down into some of those actionable goals. But right now, that's where we're at with our leadership council team. We're starting to look at some of the data components and dashboard, and I want to share a little bit of that with you here, just kind of a little sneak peek. And then obviously, again, the planning and communication about this is going to be so important. And so we're talking about that too. And again, the communications task force is coming up soon. That should help us. So I'm going to pop out here. Let's see if it'll take me there. Yeah, see it did. Let me try this. Let's see what it does. Let's just end the show. There we go. So I want to just give you a little sneak peek. We're not, you know, certainly not fully fleshed out, but we're getting started on the dashboard here, right? So we've got our dashboard with our updated mission and vision and our values there. Here's our, this is going to be changing actually, right? As you know, we've been working on updating our logo and things like that. So that will be different. But we've started to build out here our strategies and operational strategies. So, you know, take a look. Here's an example, right? When we look at college and career pathways, you know, we know we want to evaluate our course offerings and what do we want to do very explicitly. We want to increase dual credit course offerings and increase student participation in those classes, right? With career pathways, we're looking at the same, same thing, right? We want to have more opportunities for kids to be exposed to career pathways, increase the number of pathway programs, and increase the number of students earning credentials. So we're starting to flesh this out. And then what our teams are going to start doing is building out concrete, you know, goals over the course of each year. The other piece that's key here on the dashboard is we have then indicators. And we're starting to build this piece out too, right? So obviously, there aren't any numbers in these yet because we're just getting started. But again, think about our career and college pathway. So then you can look to the indicators and we can keep data here that tracks over time. Okay, how many students have earned an industry credential? How many programs are available for students to earn a career pathway? The percentage of students who are exposed to career opportunities, a number of certified staff who are certified to teach dual credit courses, right? So we can have these indicators here and show, you know, progress on those over time. So we're excited to be getting this rolling a little bit. And obviously, it's still early, but wanted to give you a sneak peek of this dashboard and where we think this work is going.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
With things, let's say, number of certified staff that are qualified to teach, do we have a goal and then the number so that we can see how close we're coming to the goal or if we're improving?
That'll be the idea. Yep. Yep. So we'll develop, what do we think our goal should be like, you know, how many students should have earned an industry credential? Or how many, what percentage of students do we really think is a reasonable target to say have participated in at least one dual credit course, right? So we can set that goal and then over time, track how we're doing, getting there. Yep. Good question. So that, that's where we're at for now. Lots going on, but we're excited about it.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Board dialogue topics and pending action consideration. We have one policy update. And I will just read that this policy has been reviewed by the administration and the policy committee. It was presented for the first time on May 13th, second reading on June 10th, and is being presented at this time for a third reading and adoption. Questions may be directed at the policy committee chair.
Yes, so this policy we have reviewed at past meetings. And we talked about this at two policy committee meetings. We had waited until this meeting for approval to make sure everyone had a chance to go over the last bits of pieces we discussed. But any questions, I'm happy to address.
Yeah, I do have a question. So, so I can make sure I understand clearly. Is this approval basically just saying that we're filling in the blanks so that the requirements from the state? Or are we really doing anything that's actionable in this vote?
Well, the first piece of it is that this is a brand new policy that's created based on a new law that was passed by the state. So there is a piece of this that we do have to meet legal requirements. So we made sure that we went through and met all legal requirements so that we were compliant with the law, but then also made sure that this fit any needs that we might have for the district and addressed the need, the, the point of the policy to make sure that what was in there was actionable through some different steps.
Yeah, I suppose that's what, I don't want to be the lone voice out here, but I suppose that's when I read it, I'm not sure how actionable it is. I mean, it's kind of ironic that the state would present this because this is 56 years after the Kerner Commission. Now, if you don't know what the Kerner Commission was, then that speaks to a problem in itself. That's K E R N E R, if you don't want to look it up.
Otto Kerner.
Yeah, the former governor, but before he was governor, he was a judge and he was appointed by London Johnson to look at our society the way it was then. And really hasn't changed much. And like I said in one, a previous meeting, we're 70 years on since Board of Education, Tepica, Kansas, Brown. And so when I read it, I thought to myself, I said, you know, that's why I was asking whether it was actionable. Because if we're just filling in blanks, I think we're missing part of it.
Yeah, and I think a piece of it is that the policies are created not, not to detail every single action that will be taken around the policy, but to create the rules that the district has to follow while creating those actions and implementing those actions. Because our job as the board is to make those rules.
Of course.
Yep. And then they're to execute them as the experts and we're to follow up and make sure it's happening.
Yeah, I think maybe some context on that might be, I think the, a good way to think about it might be that the, the policy is put in place to make sure, basically to say, hey, as a school district, here's what we're accountable for, right? This is what you're accountable for. This is, you know, makes you compliant with the law. These are the things you have to do. So that's, you know, that's at like its most basic level. But similarly to like curriculum, there might be a policy, two pages about curriculum, but that really doesn't, that doesn't encompass at all all the work that we actually do as a school district to develop curriculum and implement curriculum and, you know, work with our educators and our community through the curriculum. And I would say, taking something like this, this is really the same, right? So this policy is based on, you know, an updated law. We have to adopt it to hold ourselves accountable. But then, all these other things that we're actually doing, like in the strategic plan and our cultural competency goals and some of those kinds of things, you know, the way we, you know, implement our code of conduct and all that kind of stuff, that's all ongoing work that we are constantly striving to improve and stuff anyway. I don't know if that...
Maybe the operative would be striving to do it.
Yes.
How, maybe this is not the meaning to do that, but I guess when I read it and looked over it and tried to discern what it was saying, I'm not sure if I understand the benchmarks of what has been accomplished towards this. Because if it were so obvious, then why would they even bother to update this to make it so? And that's why I say when I looked at it, I thought it's kind of thin on some issues, but then I'm not sure how actionable it will be. It's just, I hope we're not just filling in the blanks and saying, okay, you know, this is what we're doing, this is what we're striving to do. But is it really something that's realistic for Geneva?
Right.
I try to recall for this idea of the Geneva bubble because it depends on whether you're on the outside looking in or looking from the inside out, right? If you're in a fishbowl, then all you see is yourself. And of course, that's illegal in France, but by the way, the idea is that, yeah, I suppose it's how you look at it.
Right.
And I don't, I suppose I'm just still trying to get my grasp of reading it.
Yeah.
I, I would say that I recognize that this may fall short in some ways, but it's progress, even if it's modest progress.
Well, yeah.
Happy to see it. And I think we should vote to approve it.
All right.
Willard, would you like to make a motion?
Uh, I, go ahead, Stephanie, you can do it. I don't want to be on record.
I'll make a motion to approve policy 2270.
Second.
Stephanie Bellino.
Hi.
Aye.
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 Thank you all. Item eight, work-study topics for future action consideration. These are all policies that have been reviewed and so forth, but would you like to address anything here?
Nothing too new in these policies. A lot of these were either small updates or just reviewing the policies. But we did go over these in our June policy meeting. So you guys can all take a look at that, the video of that meeting for any specifics, but not too much there.
Can I bring a question?
Sure.
I read today the Exhibit 2:140-E, the guidance for board members and communications using email use.
Yeah, we did talk about that policy, but...
And, and what I see that I think I brought up to Andy previously, but we're still missing in it, is record retention for board members. Because we, we, I have no idea what the school district's record retention policy is.
For emails.
And we get emails from, delivered or produced by a school, pieces of computers or emails and sent to us. And if the school board has a, let's say, a three-year or a two-year record retention, I'm a pack rat. I save everything and I file everything. And if I have that five to six, seven years, that still would be foilable and that would be available for anybody. And if I was supposed to have disposed of it by rules, it's not listed in there. I think that's something that somebody needs to look at and find out what the record retention policy needs to be and let us know. Because, you know, I'll follow it once I know what it is.
Sure. Yeah, I think that we can probably partner and get some advice on that, on what that should be so that we're compliant with whatever the laws and expectations are.
Candidly, we should reach out to one of our attorneys, I think.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That works. Okay, any other questions? There's no action required at this time. The board meeting has information, which is the board meeting presentation schedule and FOIA requests, which are in the information that you have, and no action is required. Next is, boy, one of my favorites, the consent agenda. So here goes. Personnel report, resignations, retirements. I'm going to just move this mic closer. I bet somebody would like it. Personnel report, resignations, retirements, leave requests, changes in assignment, FTE, new hires. And number two, monthly financials, June policy, that's 440, 455. Three gifts, grants, and bequests. $10,500 Geneva pool service, $1,500 LE Giant Fire Protection, $1,500 Bob Jass Chevrolet, $1,500 Ken's Auto Center, $1,500 State Bank of Geneva, $1,500 Grace Power and Control LLC, $1,500 Foxfire LLC, $1,500 for GHS athletic supplies and uniforms. That's, all of those are for that. Item four, request to purchase $208,740 Insight Public Sector to purchase 420 student devices, five disposal of paper copies of digitalized special equipment, students temporary files. Six, request for payment, request for payment of $95,913 to C Isatelli Heating and Piping for Western Avenue School, Unit Event Equipment and Replacement Project. Item seven, request for payment number two, $1,050, I'm sorry, $1,055,233.40 to C Isatelli Heating and Piping for Continued Unit Event Equipment Replacement at the Western Avenue School. Item eight, request for payment number four, $22,194 to Northwest Contractors for district-wide health, life, safety repairs. Item nine, request for payment number four, $22,177.55 to Malco Roofing in Illinois for the 2023 roof renovations. Item 10, request for payment $291,978 Combined Roofing Services LLC for the 2024-25 Heartland School Roof Renovations. Item 11, request for payment of $383,240.43 for Field Turf USA for the 2024-2025 GHS Track and Turf Replacement. Item 12, request for payment of $63,000 to Premier Mechanical, Inc. for 24-25 GHS Hot Water Heater Replacement. 13, request for payment number two of $964,555.96 to Premier Mechanical for the 24-25 GHS Hot Water Replacement. So there are two different items for that. Item 14, request for payment of $85,489.20 to Johnson Controls for the 24-25 Fabian Elementary School Burner Replacement. Item 15, request for payment of, number two, of $6,079 to Consolidated Flooring of Chicago for the 23-24, well, here's an elementary school, I'm sorry, Fabian Elementary School and Geneva Middle School South Gymnasium Floor Refinishing. Item 16, request for payment number five of $6,788.80 to Correct Electric for the 2022-23 This Building Fire Alarm Replacement. And well, item 17, request for payment number six, $24,508.65, again, to Correct Electronic, Inc. for the 2022-23 This Building Fire Alarm Replacement. Approval is recommended. Did I get it all right?
I think so.
I actually will just mention that in the facilities meeting today, we discussed ways to reduce the number of items that fall under this heading because these have actually already been approved by us before. And we don't really need to do them twice. But in this case, we have to do this. So could we have a motion, please? So moved. Second.
Second.
Bonnie?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you all for that. Board member comments and reports. Dan, would you like to start?
Sure. I don't really have a lot in this meeting, but the only thing I did, I don't know how many board members are planning to attend the annual triple I conference, but I registered and it sounds like some of the pre-conference stuff was already filled up. So if you're looking to do that, yeah. So, so make sure you get in there so you can get the classes that you want to get into. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Molly?
I don't have much either. I did attend a technology task force update, a side meeting. I wasn't able to attend the actual one, but Mike was very accommodating and briefed me. So just shout out to him and all the work that he's been doing to ensure that all of our students get their devices before the beginning of the school year. It's really remarkable that every student has a device to support their learning. Hope that everybody's surviving the storms out there. Good luck to everyone again tonight. And just excited for the start of another school year.
Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, today we had the, as Larry mentioned, the facilities task force meeting. Had an excellent meeting today. We have an interim director, I guess would be the title of that, and brings a professionalism and a...
And brings a professionalism and a number, much of experience from doing this with a number of other school districts and universities. And I think we're going to see some changes in, in how we do things that'll improve the process and, and make things a little bit more smoother and move along a little quicker and, which will also help in how, so we won't have a lot of carryover from one year to the next on some specific large projects. So I'm kind of excited from the discussions we had today. We're putting it in, in that team's hand to, to bring recommendations to the board. And I'm looking forward to see what comes out of that.
Thank you. Go ahead, Steph.
Not much from me. We do have a Communications Task Force meeting coming up later this week. So more to report on that at the next meeting. But other than that, I'm just always amazed by, you know, summer is a great time for a break. But really, our schools are so busy, whether it's camps being run at, you know, the middle schools or the high schools for different sports or just different activities. And specifically, the librarians who are always running different times at their school libraries for the students to come in and get some books and just stay connected to the school and each other in a different way. So thank you to all those staff members who are still working over the summer to help our students out and just keep them connected.
Willard?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the tour that Paul, Ann and I participated in last Monday was quite illuminating. First time I could see my neighborhood school, so to speak, Fabian Elementary, and, and see the high school from a different perspective. Appreciate, again, Principal Rogers for giving us context of how many different updates and renovations that have taken place at a high school since, was it 1956, 54, somewhere back there?
The first section is 56.
56, yeah, 56. So, yeah, quite, quite illuminating, seeing the commitment to all these buildings. We only saw three. And so it just puts a little bit more context, I think, in all these different meetings. We have subcommittees and task forces and things like that. It just kind of brought a lot of things to life. So I got, I've been in four schools. I got six more to go, I guess. So that was good. One other thing about the following meeting, I would say that in the, in the spirit of what we've been talking about in terms of this mandate from the state, there, last year I attended the first time. And there is on Thursday, an equity immersion that takes place. Now, I was just there for the first time last year. I think that might, just from my limited understanding of watching that or participating, I should say, last year, that might be beneficial to some of us, not all of us. I mean, I'm planning on attending that again. I got a lot of insight from people that were, you know, here in the Chicagoland area, Downstate. Had a nice chat with the, what do you call it, the Superintendent Skolki, getting her perspective of some of the things that they're dealing with in a more diverse community. But it's just, and of course, this is after the attack in Israel. But it's just, I think something some of you might want to consider, just to give you maybe a little bit more context and perspective. It's not just for people that are minorities. There are a lot of people that don't look like me, I'll put it that way. So.
Okay, thanks. Jackie?
Sure. I want to let my fellow Board Members know, I did submit an application to the IASB School Board Governance Recognition Program. We have been recognized in the past, so hopefully we will be recognized again. We'll see. I don't recall when we find out, but it was submitted. I just wanted to give kudos to the HR team for all the hiring, looking at the Personnel Report. Lot of certified and support staff in key positions. So I know it's a lot of work over the summer to hire new people, move people around. It was evident on the report this month. So great job filling all those positions and doing that work and...
They have Red Bull IVs just hanging on.
And like Molly, I attended the special Technology Task Force meeting to hear about the devices. And kudos to Mike's team for having a plan in place, you know, kind of that Plan B. They were able to pivot and are dedicated to getting all those devices ready for the school year. That, that's not an easy task to have to image all those machines in a short notice, but they have a plan in place. So I'm happy that we approved that tonight and we'll move forward with that. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Jackie. It was summertime, and so we had less to talk about than usual. However, the Facilities Task Force, as Paul recommended, is, is exciting, actually, because we're moving ahead. When you have the same management for a long period of time, it's possible to get set in your ways. And we're going to be much more flexible moving forward, which should improve efficiency. And Paul and I are both very much in favor of that. I went to some of those conferences that you were talking about, Willard, and I will tell you, I found them extremely meaningful. And I would encourage anyone to attend any of those seminars or speaking things. I also had an opportunity to go through the high school, not with Mr. Rogers, but with a couple of high school students and about 25 people from France, all high school students as well. It was very interesting to see their reaction to what we have. And we happened to be going through the theater when the theater teacher was going through. And he took us all up on the catwalk. Nobody, I had never done that before. That's quite a view. And so that was actually pretty enjoyable. So all in all, things seem to be on a very good track. I'm really proud to be a part of this board. You guys are wonderful and I think everybody's doing good work. So we'll keep on keeping on. Any, any other comments or remarks? I was hoping you'd have some. We have need of Executive Session to Consider Matters Pertaining to Executive Sessions. Oh, that's a double line. Employment Compensation, Discipline, Performance, or Dismissal of Specific Individuals Who Serve as Independent Contractors in a Park, Recreational, Educational Setting or Specific Volunteers of the Public Body or Legal Counsel for the Public Body Including Hearing Testimony on a Complaint Lodged Against an Employee, a Specific Individual Who Serves as an Independent Contractor or Park, Recreational, Educational Setting, or Volunteer for the Public Body or Against Legal Counsel for the Public Body to Determine Its Validity. However, a Meeting to Consider an Increase in Compensation to a Specific Employee That is Subject to the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act May Not be Closed and Must Be Open for the Public Litigation When Action Against or Affecting or On Behalf of the Particular Public Body Has Been Filed And Is Pending Before the Court or Administrative Tribunal Or When the Public Body Finds That Action Is Probable or Eminent In Which Case Basis for Finding Shall Be Recorded and Entered Into the Minutes of the Closed Meeting. Anyone care to move? We go into Executive Session?
So moved.
Second.
Hi.
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 Hi. We'll have a five-minute break before we go into this. And at that time, we'll start the Executive Session.